Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency, July 14, 2014, a little after 5:00. Roll call, please. Kathy Stare.
Roger Sprague is excused. Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Agleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quant.
Here. First order is comments from citizens' presence. If there's anyone to speak before the agency at this time, obviously there is not, we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting. You have in your package the minutes of the meeting for September 8th. Anyone have any corrections? Not to take a motion to approve them? So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it's approved. If you have a special order of business tonight, we have a presentation, and we have a report from David Price, the Small Business Development Center.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. If you don't mind, I was gonna read the presentation that I submitted to staff at the Urban Renewal Agency, and then open it up to field any questions you might have about our program, which what we're applying for is basically the second round of economic development grant, I believe it's called, funding for small business management and small business classes at the SBDC here in Lincoln City. For more than 18 months, the Small Business Development Center at Oregon Coast Community College has endeavored to deliver top-quality business education and resources to small businesses located throughout the city's urban renewal district with the assistance of your economic development grant program. All told, 57 business owners have served in this program thus far, and each, we think, has left the program better armed to compete and succeed in the field than when they started. They've built websites, they've ramped up their marketing, others have gotten a firmer grasp of their finances through mastery of QuickBooks, or simply learning more about how to create and use fundamental financial statements. What's more, this doesn't count the brand-new Small Business Management Program that is just launched this fall, just two weeks ago, at our Lincoln City campus. The 13 solopreneurs in this cohort will be challenged academically and otherwise all throughout this year. Each is an artist and sole proprietor doing business within the urban renewal district. Their vitality and energy benefits the entire business community, and this program, using an innovative curriculum designed specially for businesses like theirs, will help them improve their business acumen and performance in this challenging marketplace. It goes without saying that we're very excited about renewing this funding, the possibility of doing so, I should say, for the coming year, and I hope to be able to continue to offer this exclusive advantage to businesses located within the city's urban renewal district. We would hope that the SBDC would be allowed to spend the same amount as in the total grant amount first made available in 2013 while requesting one revision. It would be more powerful for us, and I think for the local businesses, if they could take more than one class per academic term, which was something that was kind of self-limiting. I think I added that in my own application because I thought, well, this will help spread the wealth. But we really weren't overwhelmed with the numbers that I kind of expect, and I believe over time we'll see it. I think it's gonna grow on an exponential curve, but for now, I don't think it's a problem of headcount and space in classrooms, so I'd like to remove that limiter if I could, as long as we're within the financial parameters that work for the agency. So today, I did learn of some specific questions raised by the committee, and I'd like to address those if I can. The first has to do with the number of jobs created in Lincoln City from our programs, partially or at least funded by this program. The answer is, for year-to-date 2014, of 26 jobs that we've recorded so far that were, that our clients signed an impact validation form saying these jobs were created thanks to the assistance of the SBDC, not just because, hey, we were gonna grow anyway. And it's a big hurdle to clear, frankly, but four were in Lincoln City. Last year, the total number of jobs created in Lincoln City was 12. And just a side note, we typically spend the fall term doing a lot of outreach and getting, and those of you who've participated in our program have probably been contacted by us in November or December and saying, hey, tell, let's talk about what happened this year, as we sort of recap the calendar year. So our impact validations are gonna go up over the next quarter. It's always our busiest quarter, and so I feel a little hamstrung delivering those numbers now because I think they're gonna be underwhelming. But talk to me in 60 days, and I think things change for the better. That's almost always the case. A couple of caveats to note here. The first is that the vast majority of participants thus far in the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Program have been business owners taking specific, short-term classes. Relatively few have taken the year-long Small Business Management Program, and unfortunately, I don't currently have a means to capture the true impact of a given one-night class on QuickBooks, or social media, or that sort of thing, or fundamentals of accounting, or even business law. But as this program introduces our program to new clients, and vice versa, I think we're laying the foundation for powerful relationships that will build over time. And I think that one could argue that it would take longer than six to 12 months, or the history of this program so far, to develop the kind of, for a client to feel comfortable sharing some of the very closely-held details about their business's growth, much less for us to be confident that indeed our instruction, support, and guidance has had a pivotal role in that growth or expansion. So put another way, I'm confident that these impacts will continue to grow over the next year as our relationships with Lincoln City businesses mature, some of the folks that we weren't able to contact and work with until this program came about. And, you know, I'm glad this is on the record, because I want to play this tape in a year, and I think we'll see that. Another question I'd like to address is whether the program has had an overall impact in making more training opportunities available in Lincoln City to Lincoln City's small businesses. And the answer to that question is a resounding yes, and that's in all caps on my notes. In 2013, the SBDC presented 23 events in Lincoln City. These were events that actually happened, they weren't canceled for lack of enrollment or anything like that. In 2014, with two months left to go in the term, and probably our busiest two months, our fall term is definitely our busiest, we've already notched 35 events right here in Lincoln City, and attendance is up across the board. And these, mind you, well, I already mentioned that these are events that were actually took place, and were not canceled for lack of enrollment. We've had very few cancellations this year, actually. By comparison to those 35 events held in Lincoln City so far this year, we've presented 26 classes or workshops over the same period of time at our larger Newport campus. I think that's the inescapable conclusion, is that the city's investment in these opportunities is benefiting the city's small businesses. And we hope testimony like this only encourages more of them to take advantage of this remarkable program, should it be renewed this year. Thanks for your consideration, and I look forward to fielding any questions.
Are there any questions? Kurt, does an event, that's synonymous with class?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. Yes, in the events that I cited there, there's probably two, maybe three events that I call an event because they're free. There is no tuition, and they're open enrollment, there perhaps we have a visiting marketing expert, or we have a free social media event. This summer, we did a few that, for example, that touched on a number of different topics, just to get people engaged with us over the course of the summer, and to keep us on their radar for the fall term. So, but the vast majority of those are paid classes, with prior registration required.
And of the 179 advising clients, how many of those were Lincoln City businesses?
Short answer, I don't know that. I can get you that information, or I can get it to staff.
Okay. And of the 30 jobs in Lincoln County, any tracking on those? Do they still exist? Were those in Lincoln, how many in Lincoln City, how many in Newport?
The, of the 30 jobs cited in the report, there were actually, if I'm not mistaken, I believe four were from Lincoln City, and 12 were from Seal Rock and Yahat's in the balance. I want to say 16, something like that, was from the Newport area. And so it was kind of spread out. But again, I, you know, I do believe that the metrics like that, like the impact that your involvement with the SBDC has had over, on your capital infusion, whether you receive new loans, or new capital, or new investors, or your overall sales growth, your sales performance, if you've recorded a massive increase, and you think, oh, gosh, that's really because these folks counseled me to open that second location, or whatever the case may be. I think those types of things we'll see more of as we see this, like, for example, this new cohort of 13 people who are gonna be taking classes, who've just started here in Lincoln City over the course of the next year, and as we build relationships even with those people that we started interacting with a year ago.
And of these 41 jobs retained, spread all over the county?
Yes, spread all over the county. I don't have that number in front of me, Chester. I can get that. That's easily searched in our system.
And the two new businesses?
Those are, those were in Lincoln City. Those were in Lincoln City. I can get you names of those as well.
Please do.
Will do. Two new businesses, and the percentage of the 41 retained jobs. Will do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
David, when you were talking earlier, the 57 business owners that have participated in the, in classes, and what I heard you say, so, help me, but they took short-term classes, so they were kind of one class, it wasn't the long, longer-term Small Business Development Year-Long Training Program?
Indeed.
Correct?
Indeed.
But, so you mentioned then, the 13 that are now taking that program, not in the 57, so in addition to, and those are?
Maybe one or two who attended one of those classes, but I think most, almost by and large, these are, these are new folks.
And those are, the 13 are Lincoln City folks in the urban renewal area?
Each one of them.
Terrific. And I guess what I was wondering, because was it timing that folks, we didn't have the class started when you first came and had the?
We had, we had plenty of time, to be honest with you.
Okay, so they could've.
I think I came to you a few months before the start of the fall term, the last time we were here. The, I don't really know. Honestly, I think the deal sounded too good to be true. Like, what are you trying to sell me? You know, I really believe that. I couldn't imagine that we didn't put 30 people in the first cohort that year. And if you'll remember, we, what we ended up doing with the first group of students who went through our Small Business Management Program back then, we, I think it was six or seven, and we put them through what was called the ISBM. It was the first time we'd ever offered it. And the ISBM was instructed by a woman named Misty Lambrecht, who is the tech instructor, not only for our SBDC, but throughout the state. She is a tremendous resource throughout the state. And I kind of thought, this might be the future of the SBM. And in fact, it has become that. A fundamental change that's happened over the summers, I actually hired Misty, who had always been an independent contractor for the SBDC. She's now a half-time employee of Oregon Coast Community College. And she, and Ron Spiso, who has for 22 years been, I think it's 20, it might be 20, but he has been the coordinator of the SBM program. This is the year-long program that businesses can sign up for and take at our colleges. Starts in the fall term, it ends at the end of the spring term, and now they are teaching it together, so that that ISBM curriculum is intertwined. And so you can't go through our program without getting the very latest in social media marketing and search engine optimization mixed in with your sort of cocktail of other, of other business information. And the other thing I want to point out is that this cohort of 13 people that just started in Lincoln City, the curriculum we're using is one we've borrowed from Portland Community College. There's an advisor there named Jackie Babacki-Petersen, and Jackie's written a book called Better, Smarter, Richer. And I can tell you a couple things about, just very briefly, she brought this to, it was written about the challenges that are unique to solopreneurs, people who are literally the only person in the shop. Oftentimes, that's an artist, it's a creative, it's someone who hires maybe one or two people during the summer season, ideally, maybe more, but typically works alone. They, you know, their work is their, whether they're baking, or creating, and so they face certain challenges, but they also, they don't need to sit through some of the classes that I would typically put in a Small Business Management Program. They don't care about inventory control, they don't care about how the retail space looks, because many of them don't own their own shop. You know, they do business in various other shops. And so she actually recognized all this years ago, wrote this curriculum, and then Guy Faust, my predecessor, brought her to town, and brought her to Lincoln City and Newport, and she talked, and one of the folks who attended was Catherine Rickbone, the director of Coast Arts down in Newport. And she has since had Jackie back more than once. In fact, we've issued a call to all Lincoln County artists, and I would include all of you here tonight. If you'd like to meet Jackie, we're doing a kickoff to introduce her to the clients who will be learning her material, and she's coming, it's only to the Lincoln City campus this time, unfortunately, not to Newport, but she'll be here during the day to meet with our students, and then at the, in the evening, to deliver a free lecture that's open to any artist or anyone in the community. And that's Wednesday, November 12. And so it's a chance to meet the person who's created this curriculum. And again, we're not the first to use it. It's been deployed all over Oregon for some time now. In fact, the SBDC's network has a website called BizCenter.org, and you can, for a couple hundred bucks, take a version of this class online on your own time. But we think it's much more powerful delivered in person over the course of an academic year. So we're really excited about it, and I think marrying that with the technology side of things, it's gonna be a real powerful program.
Well, it sounds like it was just kind of a time lag in marketing, and as you have indicated, getting belief into that the funds were there, the willingness to do scholarships and get the people. So I'm encouraged by all that you've, your numbers and what you're reporting.
Well, I've, I think that's what we're seeing. I think it's not unlike the typical, you know, I just sat through another Facebook class last week at our, at our campus in Lincoln City, and I think, as I look at the Facebook population growth of not only the sites that I manage now for the college and the Small Business Development Center, but also my own business that I had here from 2005 to 2013, and I recognize the curve that we're in. We're still just sort of getting that critical mass of people, and I would imagine that whether it's a year from now, or a year from that point, I'll be in front of you talking about the breaks that we're having to put on the program to, whether it's a selection process, or if you've already taken a class, you have to wait a term, or something like that. I can't imagine not getting to that point, because it must get to a, to a point where it's too popular. If funding were to continue, I'm making grand assumptions here, but I wouldn't be surprised to see that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
David, I'd also appreciate a few examples of the impact validation forms that have been completed.
Okay. And staff shared that with me about an hour ago, and I'd be more than happy to provide that. I do want to double-check with my representative at the SBA to find out what I have to redact, or what I, what I need to do, because on the one hand, in the presentation that you've got before you, I'm saying, oh, we can share this, and now where the rubber meets the road, I'm thinking, I can share it, can I? And I'm sure that there's, there's certain forms I can show you, even if we have to black out a name or two, you know, we'll show you all the detail that you need, I think.
Or in lieu of a form, have people who have taken the course and benefited by it coming to testify, to let us know.
Great. That I'm sure I can do.
I went through the course, Chester, it was very good. SBDC 1, SBDC 2, so just to let you know. Been a couple of years now, but...
And, you know, you mentioned the SBM 2. We still have the SBM 2 as an informal program, because now we've sort of condensed the content of the Small Business Management into that, the one, the first academic year. But as you know, once you're in the SBM, you're never out. You're sort of in the family, and we see these people over and over again. I still see people from Class 1 and 2, from the '90s, who are attending our workshops and events, because once you're in the system, you're invited to all of our events, you're invited to come free of charge. And, you know, Jackie Babacki-Petersen's a perfect example. We hope to fill the room with past graduates who just simply didn't get that content, because we didn't have it back then. And so the SBM 2 still exists, even though it's a little less formally structured than it once was.
Any more questions from staff? Our four, for Dave.
So, so other than information, and I guess I'm trying to, you're kind of reporting on our previous grant, and these are the results from that. Was that a $10,000 grant?
All told, it was, I think it was closer to $19,000?
Nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah, it was two different programs, and in fact, it was originally structured as three. And I was hoping, when we first presented this, I had a gentleman on staff named Roger Jones, who was an advisor, who had tremendous experience in lean management, and also retail display, and a lot of sort of boots-on-the-ground retail work. And so we put together a proposal for the, the agency to consider for three different prongs, and there was basically funds to cover his visits to X number of businesses in Lincoln City to do an audit of their property, and their lean management techniques, et cetera. Plus, then there was a second scholarship only for different classes and programs, and then there was one that was specific to the Small Business Management Program. And we wound up not spending a dime of the, of the funds that were, that were set for the retail presence, because he relocated to Yuma. We've lost Roger, unfortunately. And so we sort of shifted in, you know, sort of midstream there. But basically, what we're asking for here is two different pools, one for the general scholarships for the various classes that we offer, whether it's a $30 Facebook class, or a $180 build-your-own-website class. And then separately, we still kept the SBM, the Small Business Management Program, in its own box, if you will.
So, so are we into the request now? Is that?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. That's just the presentation from?
From previous?
Previous.
Okay. Because I thought, I thought I heard David asking.
Oh, so. I didn't mean to.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm supposed to.
I don't have any more questions.
I'm more than happy to ask.
Any more questions for David? Seeing none, thank you very much, David.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a request for funds for local support grant from SBDC.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, so we do, as you all just heard Dave Price's report on the grant that was issued last year, just kind of as a recap, we have the Local Program Support Grant, Local Program Support Grant Program, it's a kind of a mouthful. This is one of the economic development tools that was presented to the agency in 2012, and you all decided to move that forward. So last year was the first year that it was made available for folks to apply, and Small Business Development Center was that application. And the program must provide services within the urban renewal district, and grants can be up to $10,000 per program, but that's capped at $25,000 per organization, per year. This year, we have $80,000 in that fund available. Again, this is still a new program, so we can't really anticipate what the demand is, but we do have one application so far from Small Business Development Center that you all have before you this evening. And just to recap, that request from the Small Business Development Center is for two different projects, one being the Small Business Management Program Scholarship, and that would seek to apply to 12 businesses per term, and that, those businesses, of course, would be in the urban renewal district. And then the project number two that they are proposing is small business training classes, which could be offered to up to 150 businesses. And Mayor, you asked a question earlier about how much money was issued last year to the SBDC. And just to let you know, the total that was spent for those programs was $16,900. That was the request. And then about $12,500 was actually issued. $4,200 was not spent of that original You have a question, Chester?
Allison, project number one, that would be in the urban renewal district in Lincoln City, is that correct, the scholarship program?
Correct.
And project number two, that's a county-wide program?
No, that's only, these are only available to businesses and their employees that are located in the urban renewal district.
Thank you.
Allison, could I go for correction on that? Because I thought I heard Chester ask, program, project one, again, that's the management program, not individual classes. So that, that would be, if I get this right, Mr. Price indicated that currently there are 13 people in that program from Lincoln, Lincoln City Urban Renewal, well, I guess Lincoln City, right?
Yeah. So scholarships would only be made available to 12 of the 13?
Or somehow split?
Assuming that they are in the urban renewal district.
Right.
Maybe not all of the 13 are in the district.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you. He clarified two or not.
So there was funds, okay. So, and then the 150 businesses, I was trying to equate that to classes, so, because that's the scholarship program for individual classes, correct?
Correct. So a business could take a class, a term, for three terms.
Yeah. And I guess I'm wondering why the category of businesses versus putting a cap on the number of classes that could be taken, or will there be a cap on the amount of money? Maybe we're...
There would be a cap on the amount of money, yes. I think the idea is to get as many people taking classes as possible.
Okay. So the 150 businesses is not a limiting factor?
Dave, do you want to clarify that?
And maybe I'm not asking the right question, but...
I think you are, and I think this is a, this is a relic from the previous presentation, when I thought we might have to cap it for just resource allocation reasons, and that hasn't been the case in the X number of months, 15 months, that we've actually had this first program. So I probably shouldn't have used that language at all as a limiting factor. I think that the limiter is the $10,000 in funds available, and so once it's gone, it's gone. And then just to clarify on your earlier point, yes, I believe two, one or two of the 13 that are in the program now were close to the urban renewal district boundary, but weren't, but they were hooked enough that they decided to go ahead and pay for the program. So that's, that's why the 12 is not a problem.
Good. Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
On that, or is there more? So...
That's it. It's, it's just a proposal that you have before you.
So then, help me with the dollars, if you could. What are we, at the same $10,000?
The proposal for project one is $10,000, which is the limit of the program for this project. And then for project number two, they're proposing $9,000 for the training classes. So the total would be $19,000 for the request for the two projects for the
Do I have any questions from staff at the SBDC?
Just the only other thing was, if I heard before, there was a, the reason the funds didn't get used before, the $4,000 roughly, was because we had put another component on it where you could only take one class, or something, and we're gonna lift that out?
Last year, their proposal had three projects, and the third project was that component of the retail person who would come and give the lean?
Oh, gotcha.
Lean business consulting that would be kind of per-business, more customized, and that person had since relocated, and that program was not available.
So there is no limitation on the individual classes? I could take two or three if I so qualified?
Yes.
And, great.
And then when the money is spent, it's spent?
Yeah. Okay. Thus, the community college would manage that, the Small Business Development Center would manage the funding, okay? I don't have any more questions.
Any more questions?
I'd make, is there a motion?
Yeah.
You know, I'd make the motion to approve the request of?
$19,000.
$19,000 to go through projects one and two, as previously explained?
We have a discussion. If not, since this involves money, we will need a roll call vote, please, Kathy?
Ellingson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Eggleton? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a project update. It's Allison.
Okay, we've got a few project updates. The traffic signal at South First Street, this project is nearing completion. I would say it's 99.9% complete. They removed the overhead wires. You can see here, there's a before picture showing the signal on wires and an after with the traffic signal on mast arms. They also improved all four corners of the intersection with ADA ramps. And they added, it's kind of hard to see in this photo, but there's some yellow signal reflectors that are around the traffic signals. And that's just to help with nighttime visibility. If there's a traffic, sorry, power outage, then they're, they're much better to, to be seen. And then people know they need to come to a stop if those lights are out. And also an audible pedestrian crossing. Here's another before shot. This is looking north on Highway 101. And here's an after. And I think I've got one more. Here's a before, looking kind of northwest. And an after. Next, we have the utility undergrounding project. This is the design project that will follow the traffic signal replacement. And so our consultants have issued the 90% plans to the utility companies and to city staff and urban renewal staff for review. And all of those reviews have come back to the designers, so they are now finalizing the plans. And we will continue with our permit requests and easements. And then we will come back to you to talk about bidding. And at that time then, we'll know better how to phase the project when, when it comes to tourism and nighttime versus daytime work, what ODOT will allow, and the different complexities involved with construction. So that timing will be discussed as soon as we're ready to talk about it. Also, this is kind of a beating a dead horse here, bad analogy, but the Urban Renewal Plan Amendments, as you can remember, for the last year, we had been working on those. And those are finally complete. They were recorded with the county at the end of September. And a letter will be sent to the properties that are now brought into the district. And just to let them know that they're welcome to look at the economic development programs that we have available and consider applying for those if they qualify. So once again, we had a minor amendment in February. This was the Urban Renewal Agency's resolution to extend the life of urban renewal collection using an under levy. And that is to June 30th, 2024. Only collecting 20% of the increment and 80% going back to the overlapping taxing districts. And then to move forward with a substantial amendment, which was done in August at the city council meeting. And this added 34 and a half acres, 29 of which were in parcels and five were in right-of-way. And that does obviously meet the statutory requirement of not less than 25% in the Urban Renewal District and no more than 20% addition of acreage over the life of the urban renewal area. So that is now complete. Also, just as an FYI, the link, the Lincoln City loop that the Lincoln County Transit operates, we participate with the county transit and with Public Works to kind of team up and work together on making this route as effective as we can. There were some changes that the county wanted to make to the schedule, and those were made on October 1st. So we worked with them on creating a new schedule, a new map, using our GIS in-house. And Public Works has been great in helping with signage postings. And there are just some really simple things that were changed. There were two bus stops that were very close to the hospital. One was at the medical center, and they were maybe 100 feet or 200 feet from one another. And the county realized that driving into a parking lot takes much more time than just driving by the stop. So that made the, the whole route longer. So that one stop at the medical center was removed. And the, the stop that's at the hospital on 28th and Yott remains there and is available and used more often. And then the North IGA store, that stop used to be in front of the store, and now that stop is moved to the highway. And the same principle at the Walgreens store in the north end of town. And this is just really better for safety with going into a parking area where there are pedestrians. It's just safer for the bus to stay on the highway where it is safe. There are two lanes there, so that shouldn't be a problem. And here's a photo of the new bus stop at the Kenny's North store. And, you know, we, we were provided an easement to put this concrete pad there. And if funds are available in the future, and we have enough money to do a shelter, we can do that. But Public Works was great in getting that concrete pad poured and the bench installed, and it looks really nice, so. Schedules are available at the information desk.
Is this similar to the stop at Walgreens?
The Walgreens stop didn't have a concrete pad and bench. We can look to do that. We don't have an easement from Walgreens, and there seemed to be plenty of room there, so.
Thank you.
Allison, going back to the crosswalks, the wayside, I heard you say audio, audible. But is it, because I haven't looked, a countdown? Is there a countdown as well?
There is a countdown, yeah.
So it's visual as well as?
Yeah, the countdowns are pretty much standard now.
Okay, great.
I, I use them a lot in taking all the photos of the project completion. And they all work great, and you can hear them. And I guess the audible crossing sound kind of self-regulates with noise. That's what our project manager was telling us. So depending on, you know, at nighttime, they're not as loud as they are during the daytime, which is good for the hotels that are nearby.
And then the other one is on, on the bus route. And it, it came to my attention, one, I, I'd actually traveled to Newport and sat in on a public hearing regarding these, this change alone, by the way. But it, after this schedule, I heard from the school district that it did create a problem. So this is information, I don't know if you've heard from the school district. So in your, because I know you're a key contact for the bus, and I, I appreciate that through Urban Renewal. Would you include checking with the school system, especially the, the high school? Because I found out after the fact that a number of kids use the bus. And by the changing of the route or timing, fouled them up. And so the administration had to scramble with how to, how to handle some tardiness evidently. And it just caught them off-guard, so we need to somehow there, get them into the loop.
Okay, great. Thank you for that feedback. That's all I've got for project updates.
Great. Great projects.
Any more questions for Allison? If not, moving on. We have no public hearing. We have no resolution, no resolutions. Do you have any comments from any agency members this evening? If not, we are adjourned.
Thank you, David.